The October 2023 voting meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Please note that the board met for an executive session on October 6th to discuss a personnel matter. Before the pledge, I would also like to extend a welcome to the teachers from Lorraine. Welcome. Great to have you. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
On the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, would you please take the role?
Dr. Ann Herring. John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Present.
Dr. David Hemberger. Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan. Robert Quinter. Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Six present, three absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Sharon Montague, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Howar, superintendent. This is Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning. This is Diane Skornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and also as Board Secretary. First item on the agenda is a budget presentation. Dr. Howar.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. You may recall that the board had asked that the administration give a quarterly update as to where we are with expenditures over the course of the year. So we put together a brief slideshow. The first... If you could go to the next slide, Sheldon. We wanted to share this slide with you so you can see how the budget was allocated this year, where the majority of the money is for salaries and benefits. And so that is just a reminder of how the budget is constructed, how the district spends the money that we have. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Feig. And if we could go to the third slide, Sheldon, and that is the last slide in this presentation.
Okay, I first wanted to say that we're only in three months of the first quarter, and in those three months, you don't have teachers here one month. And bills are normally thirty to sixty days till they get paid, so it's really not a true picture of where we're gonna be. You know, we did break out, like, benefits were at nine and three-quarter percent, salaries at fifteen percent. You know, if it was a true three months, you'd look at everything to want at least to be under twenty-five percent. But it's not a true three months. Supplies are updated thirty-five percent, but everyone orders their supplies the first of the year. You know, once the kids get in, we start getting the supplies in. So I'm not really worried about that as much. There's certain things that price... We've had price increases in paper and, you know, toilet paper, things like that. Purchased services is at eighteen point five percent. That's property services, personal purchase. Professional technical services are only five percent. But if we look at things like our... If we went into detail, our facilities, we've had a lot of repairs that had to be done the first month. We've actually had, it's sort of interesting, we're gonna be talking about capital projects, but we had four water softening systems go bad on us, the senior high, Watten, Lorraine, junior high, kitchen. We had five water heaters go bad, the senior high domestic and the kitchen heater. Watten's water heater, which is the kitchen, Bryston Domestic Heat, Jackson Wall Domestic Heat, and Lorraine or Losh Domestic Heat here. Just those heaters and water softening systems took about one hundred and seventy thousand out of our budget. So we're worried about things going bad, and I think we've been talking about the facilities, projects, and capital improvements. Now, one thing, the Jackson Wall's water heater didn't cost us anything. We actually took the brand-new heater that was put in Losh Kitchen right before they closed the building and moved that over to Jackson Wall. So we do not have a water heater in Losh Kitchen, but we don't have any equipment in Losh Kitchen either, so we were able to save some money there. But right now, we're still looking good. I think we should be good. But I think next quarter, we'll have more of a handle on exactly where we stand. You know, the things I'm worried about are facility improvements or things going downhill. You know, the other things, there's two others that is gonna be very tight. Our utility bills, electric bills, we talked about that before. Our water bill is astronomical. Last month alone, the high school's twelve thousand dollars. Electric bill's twenty-eight thousand dollars for the high school, so it's... That one probably will be over budget. But, you know, actually, our usage is up to over last year, so I think that's a good thing, our use in the buildings, but it's also costing us more.
Right.
Any questions or concerns?
Questions from the board.
So just to add to that, if you would like a more detailed explanation of where these numbers are coming from in the graphics, you'll notice that where it has learn more, you can click on that, and this will be on our website. And you can see a detailed description and explanation of all of this information. And we will be doing the same format three more times so the board can see how this is tracking over the course of the year.
And I can also add that if you look at the treasures report each month, we have a report of expenditures and of revenues, and it's broken down even more detail every single month, so the public can see that on our website if they look at the board docs.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Feig and Dr. Howar. We have another presentation. We have with us tonight Mr. Jamie Schlesinger from PFM Financial Advisors LLC, and he will be presenting the board financing options for the proposed capital projects. Jamie?
Yep. Before Jamie goes, we're going to just do a quick little reminder of where we are with the options for capital projects, and then that way Jamie can take it and explain how to pay for those options and then what that looks like in the budget. So I'm actually gonna go down there to help... Okay, so I feel like we've been talking about capital projects for a very long time because it's a very important topic, and we wanted to make sure that everyone was clearly aware of the projects that we have in each of our buildings and the impact of not doing those projects to the district and the impact to our students. So you'll may recall this slide that Kondal presented on the October 3rd presentation. When we had first started talking about the projects, we thought that based on just the numbers that KCBA have brought in back in 2017, that we were looking at possibly twenty-one million dollars with the thought of paying back four million dollars, which was money that was already spent from the capital fund project to pay for the junior high project, the tennis courts and security upgrades throughout our buildings. As Kondal started to really dig in, they found that over the last number of years, there were even more projects or the projects that had been identified, such as the HVAC at the high school required a great deal more repair than what had initially been anticipated. So seeing that number, as I said a couple of weeks ago, was sticker shock because it was coming in well over thirty million dollars, which was not what was originally anticipated. We went back as an administration and looked at all of those projects closely and worked with Kondal to identify projects that could potentially be deferred or projects that could potentially be removed. And we started to look at those and present those options to the board. And what became very clear was the board's desire to absolutely add in those deferred projects. So when we first started looking at it, the exclusions were, you know, taking out the lighting and some of the plumbing upgrades, the auditorium, the storm management at OC, that was something that could be taken out, junior high wrestling room, and the addition of doors. So that left for you that adding back in some of the other projects, but these were the big ones, you were pulling some of these out. So that takes you about twenty-eight million. By adding in the deferred projects, you're looking at about thirty-one million dollars. And I know that the board was very concerned. There was a lot of conversation about the junior high auditorium and particularly the lobby because of what that would cost. But as we discovered, because this is gonna require ADA upgrades with the bathrooms, you have to also address the lobby. You can't do the project without doing that. And with the site repairs, that would be that road behind, right in the access road. And then looking at those masonry repairs, which that was a price tag of almost a million dollars itself. So that has it kind of... That price tag kind of creeping back up. If you were to do all of it, that you're looking at about thirty-two million, thirty-two million five, give or take. And that number has come down because when we first were working through this with the bidding process, the high school in particular was coming in, that HVAC project was coming in at a little over thirteen million dollars. They were able to solidify some of the bids, and now that project's coming in about twelve million dollars. And some of the other HVAC projects, along with some other projects, also came down in cost. And we've linked that spreadsheet there for the community and the board to, again, review. So that's where we are if you do all of those projects. I do think that it is the board's desire to look very closely at each of those projects, go back, revisit the projects that maybe were slated to be removed and perhaps downgrade them, or obviously come back and maybe remove them completely, like some... There was a lot of discussion about the movable walls at a Watten or that wrestling room now being a multipurpose room. The... In the auditorium, having the junior high auditorium turning that back into a classroom. So by looking closely at some of those projects, it's possible that you could, you know, potentially shave off another million, million and a half dollars to that thirty, thirty-two million five. But we wanted to give the board some broad strokes as to what these numbers look like, and then so Jamie could come in and present to you the financing options. So as you recall, part of this conversation was the repayment of the money that was already taken from the capital fund. And by the time it was all said and done, the security upgrades, the big one was the junior high project and the tennis courts, we're looking at almost four-point-two million dollars. And initially during that conversation, it was the thought that the best... Our best bet financially for the financial health of the district was to complete all of these projects and then also repay that money back into the capital funds. So thinking through the options, we have listed for you the three options that I just briefly went over. And then what does that look like with the repayment? And so at this point, I'm going to have Sheldon click off our presentation and turn it over to Jamie.
Thank you, everyone. Good to see you, unfortunately, for higher amounts, unfortunately. But just to give you some background from the last time we were here, one of the plans from day one was to utilize a multi-step plan to work through the capital projects. We are still suggesting and recommending that happen. And the goal with all this was giving you more information as you're working toward your capital project selection to do the steps to clean up the balances of what is necessary to be done. And there were tax advantages as well as interest opportunity advantages to the district and also the ability to kind of phase some things in over the course of time. All of those things remain the same, and we would like to work toward that process, hopefully toward the next month or so. So this is an important conversation, but keep in mind, all of the we're talking about here is part of a planning concept of what we think the impacts will be should you choose an option one, two, three, an asterisk here and asterisk there based on the decision points that you make. Okay? One second thing, which goes back to the reimbursement side, and we talked about that four million dollars. There is a tax requirement. You might recall that one of the items that you approved was a reimbursement resolution, which essentially allowed for the ability to use the funds that were on hand for the district prior to issuing debt to pay for those capital projects, which equated to about four million dollars. There is a time period to make a decision on when you can reimburse yourselves, and it's a little bit of a quirky rule, but let's just say it's between eighteen months and three years, give or take. So we'll work through that process, but I understand that there is a little bit of a clock tied to that. Okay? I know these numbers and graphs are a little funky to see, but just to give you some idea about where the market is and collectively between PFM and Stiefel, your underwriter, we've been in the market very recently and actually done a significant amount of Berks County transactions. Turns out, I sold some bonds to Spring Township last week, and actually on Thursday, we were selling bonds for Amity, and you guys took care of Topahockin on a pretty significant project, so sixty million dollars. So there are significant projects occurring with local school districts and municipalities, and this is not uncommon. And, you know, costs of projects do go up over the course of time. One thing to add, for what it's worth, we have seen in the bottom box, which is tough to see, there has been a... There was a drop last week in interest rates. That was mostly due to the Middle East conflict in the sense that people that want to put their money in safe items, and that includes municipal bonds and US treasuries. So we saw a drop in interest rates because of that. For what it's worth, you know, the market will shift around, there'll be volatility, things like that. But those are the type of things that really do impact the interest rate environment. And, you know, we will obviously work with Stiefel when we, you know, go to market to determine the right day to do it, but understand, you know, it definitely moves with things that we cannot control. Again, just looking at this page, this is the district's current debt portfolio. It's just essentially what's the outstanding debt of the district. The bottom right-hand corner, which is most important here, is when we went and did the previous transactions in June, as we all know, we removed and reduced some of your debt service payments to allow us to plan for borrowing of capital projects. We added flexibility to get to a point where we believe it'll be comfortable enough to fit within the strain of your budget, which I know is not just debt service. Right now, it's seven percent of your budget, but it will be a little bit more than that after this is said and done. But your current annual payments are about five million dollars a year. That's what you're budgeting for. Prior to that, it was about eight million dollars a year. So what we'll talk about tonight, that these various ideas, will be lower than what we started with at the beginning of this calendar year.
Right.
Yeah. Can I add to that? That's the current, but we actually budgeted for six-point-four million dollars a year because we knew we'd be going out to borrow, so I put that in the budget, you know. So it's actually a decrease of two million from the previous debt service of almost twelve percent. Now we're down to about seven or eight percent. But that's our current because we didn't borrow the money, but we budgeted for six-point-four.
Which is obviously very important because you're gonna bet you pay debt service, we hope, so you move forward with the projects. So for tonight, a couple of other things I want to point out. When we go to market, we always go through a credit rating process. The most recent time, of course, was back in May, prior to us selling the bonds that settled in June. And understand that during that rating process, it was a number of years since we've gone to the public markets. Standard and Poor's came back and provided us a double A minus credit rating with a negative outlook. Right? It's a funny number. That is a little bit different than what it's been in the past, and partly that is due to there were some uses of fund balance in previous years. So when we built the model for the planning of these transactions, the idea was we're adjusting for your budget and allowing the district to build its reserves over the course of time. And this was part of that process, although we were potentially borrowing money, which was made well aware when we talked to them. We did describe to them that kind of coming back and getting to a point where we're adding to fund balance will be important for the district to maintain its credit rating. Okay? Any questions on that? So for tonight, we ran a couple of scenarios to show you what the impacts would be should you do these various projects. Toward the left, as you probably remember before, that was the previous structures itself. We want to look at this from a big picture, so that yellow column matches that kind of four-point-nine million dollar debt service, although you budget higher than now. But if you were to borrow funds starting this year, and our suggestion has been and continues to be borrowing approximately fifteen million dollars this year, it'll be a little less than that, but that's the estimation that we suggest doing. That will allow us to provide you funding for, you know, part of your capital improvement plan. In addition, it follows certain tax rules. Number one, it is considered a small issuer exempt transaction, which means that the funds that you borrow can be invested at yields above the arbitrage yield. So as an example, the transaction I did at Spring Township, not the same as what we may get here, the average rate was four-point-two percent. That money can be deposited and earn over five percent right now. So part of this program is we're building in some estimates of what the earnings would be to allow us to build a balance to use toward the capital project program. So this is all kind of built in one big model. So in this particular case, should you borrow approximately twenty-eight million dollars, that would get you about a twenty-eight-point-five million dollar, you know, balance for capital projects. That's in the black box under number five in the upper right-hand corner. That's how we kind of built the model. So we're backing into how much funds we need to do the twenty-eight-point-five million dollar set of projects. It'll be less than that in principle, but the end result, we think, will be give or take about that amount. So that equates to about a fourteen, you know, point-six million dollar deposit on the transaction end of the year, and then about a thirteen-point-five million dollar deposit for the second transaction. What does that mean to you? Well, all of the structures that we showed from day one have been utilizing what is called a wraparound debt service structure, but maintaining a relatively, you know, good useful life, approximately fifteen years, give or take, that both matches, you know, certainly the usefulness of the buildings that we're gonna be renovating and also allows for the cash flow impact to be done over a course of time. While your other jet debt falls off, you add this new debt on. So from a budgetary standpoint, should you do both the financings over the next two years at approximately a twenty-point, twenty-eight-point-five million dollar deposit or total needs, your annual debt service would be about six-point-four million dollars. Brian's amazing. He budgeted the number exactly to what the number would be based on his analysis. So have him play the lottery. He knows what he's talking about. So that would be if you did a twenty-eight-point-five million dollar transaction, we'd have a new run rate of about six-point-four million dollars. Again, that'd take a couple of years to get there, but that would be where we would need to be based on our estimates. There's some, hopefully, a little bit of flexibility and adjustment and conservatism in the interest rates, but that's the estimate here should you do that. So, next step, thirty-two-point-five. Same concept, same colors, just different amounts. Big difference here is, instead of borrowing, you know, that thirteen-ish million dollar amount in the second year in 2024, we just increased that to over, you know, seventeen million dollars in this case. That is not set in stone. Keep that in mind. This is for planning purposes. Maybe it makes sense to stretch it over another transaction. Maybe the amount comes in lower than we expected. I mean, there's things like that we can plan for here. But in this particular case, we made the assumption that you borrowed more than fifteen million dollars, so it has a little bit different tax implication, but you can still do it. You're allowed to. It just has a different impact to you. So in that case, should you borrow that amount and you end up with a thirty-two-point-five million dollars available for capital projects, your annual debt service as estimated is about six-point-six million dollars. So like, what did I say? Six-point-four for the twenty-eight-point-five to get you the additional four or so million dollars? It's a couple hundred thousand dollars more from a budgetary standpoint. Now, it doesn't magically just, you know, disappear. You will be borrowing additional principal. So what really happens is that principal ends up a little bit more toward the end of the transaction. So we're not extending your debt by much. It just will be built into the future transaction where you have a little additional principal that comes in that last year. But from an interest standpoint, incremental amount is a couple hundred thousand dollars more to get that extra four million dollars or so. Okay? I think what's an important point here, should the board decide that they would like to proceed with something higher than that option one, and it's not a big deal, but it would need to be done, we would need to come back to the board and make a revision and a new resolution related to the borrowing because we did... The board approved a thirty-million-dollar max principal amount. That is, again, not uncommon, just means we just have to come back and replace the original one. You can still use that original resolution to complete the first step, so no changes there. And then, again, as decisions, final decisions are made, we would just need to come back at a future board meeting to make an adjustment to a different resolution with a new max schedule. There'll be some communication back to Commonwealth to let them know those things, but not a big deal at all. So I'll stop for a second, see if anyone has any questions. Obviously, Mark and I are happy to answer them for you.
Jamie, I just am wondering if you could expand on if we did not get this done by the end of the year, what the ramifications would be?
There's two things that I think are, you know, interest rates are interest rates. They could go up, they can go down. That's important, right? I think what's most important here is by locking in a portion of your debt, you are... I think what's most important here is by locking in a portion of your debt, you are locking into the market from a budgetary standpoint. Number one, we know that much. We've got half, maybe half, maybe a little less than half of the transaction locked up. That's number one. Two, that money that you receive, you can earn money on, which is valuable. You know, five years ago, you would have earned point, you know, point two percent on that money. Now you can earn five point two percent on that money. So there's an economic value to having that money in your bank to start to build up uh the cash to go toward projects, okay? And two, um you, if you did a second transaction extra, and let's say it happens to be another fifteen million dollar issue, you now have a reset for the new special exemption, for the small issue exemption. So you're kind of doing a tax thing, you're doing a locking and an interest rate thing, and you are doing an interest earning opportunity. That's the risks, you're losing some flexibility to do other things that I think makes sense from an economic standpoint.
So Jamie, the
Oh yeah, please.
The interest earning uh fifteen million small uh issue exemption goes by calendar year, not by fiscal year or year from the time you issued it. So if you close December thirty first, you basically aren't subject to arbitrage or you can make more interest than what you're paying the bonds. Uh and then if you close another one in January, that's why he's talking about trying to get the one closed before the end of the year. Then you do another fifteen million next year and, you know, and I know he's very conservative with the estimated interest earnings.
Yes, I assume three percent.
Right, and right now I think we're getting five point four five.
That's it, at least for me. I mean, obviously if there's any other questions, again, I know there's projects that need to happen, right? This was, you know, maintenance, that deferred maintenance, security measures, things like that, that are important here. Again, I, I, my honest opinion, I think we should continue to proceed as is. Let's work through this first project. You as a board can make your final determination which way things will go. But understand that, that second transaction, we can have flexibility, you know, technically to borrow a certain amount one way or the other. We don't, it's not all set in stone today. You have things that could benefit you in certain ways from, you know, things that the, uh the administration's been working through on, you know, rebates and other things like that, whatever is necessary according to the project. So these are things we're trying to work through as well. I'm just giving you the money to do the projects, all those other things that administration will work through as well.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I, I guess my question's really more towards administration in terms of uh what the overall timeline looks like for trying to execute everything here. I, 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 at least I speak for myself, I think I need to spend a little time to digest this because this is the first time we're seeing this. And uh just try to understand that in, in addition to going through the, the projects like Dr. Hemler talked about and figure out, you know, what do we uh may wanna consider getting rid of or not doing. So I'm just wondering if there's, do we see Jamie coming back uh again to a future board meeting to answer any follow-up questions? In addition to, I guess after the, the board has already met to discuss final projects and what that looks like?
Does it hurt us to have like, um to approve a new resolution like up to the, you know, top of option two? Does that hurt us?
You don't have to. Yeah, I mean, the, the previous approval fits all of the requirements under anything you'd like to do at this point in time. So you don't need to do anything legally. Obviously, the final decision on the project scope is of course what matters here, but the legal standpoint.
Yeah, I think he was saying that if you go to thirty two, you'd have to do an amended resolution.
Or something new next year.
Next year.
Yeah, it doesn't have
It doesn't have to be changed this year.
Have to happen.
Right.
In the next month. What do we need to vote on in the next month or two? If, what do you see us wanting, needing to vote on?
What I need you to do is say, this is what we're definitely gonna use for the fifteen million for. Now, the other problem
So the board needs to have that discussion.
Yeah. The other problem though is all those quotes and stuff were, were, like, the HVACs are all tied to doing both projects or, you know. So we can probably break out, but you know, there's certain things that the prices will, are not good past the end of the year, you know, unless we sign a contract.
Yeah, so I would recommend that, that if the administration could come back to us with here's fifteen million dollars worth of projects that we know we want to start first, so that we could vote on that.
I'll let Christie answer that, but I think we can do that by the third.
Yeah, so um in one of the many presentations that we've had, um they did break out a priority list of um projects that they, they're recommending just from a engineering standpoint, that probably really should get done um sooner rather than later. And one of them is definitely the high school. Um that's a, that's a priority project and that's already taking up about twelve million dollars. Um one of the things that John keeps impressing upon us is the, the longer that we, we the higher the price tag will go and the price tag every time will go up about twelve percent, which is not a little bit when you're looking at thirty million dollars worth of projects. I do think that it warrants some discussion about maybe scaling back some of the projects or like I said, maybe removing some of the things um that perhaps aren't needed. Like converting back the, the junior high classrooms um in the auditorium, those multipurpose spaces. If that's something that um we, you wanna, you wanna move towards. But even with uh removing things or scaling things back, you're probably only looking at um a little over maybe over a million dollars. But that's if you act quickly and commit to the projects because then like other projects are gonna go up and you're gonna be right back, you're gonna go, it's, yeah, it's gonna be a wash. Um so I do think the sooner we can nail down those projects, the better we will be. And then we'll have a firmer idea of how much money that you're looking to borrow. Um but a big part of this conversation is what are you going to do about the four point one million dollars that um you've already taken from the capital projects? And what does that look like? Um because in both of these figures that Jamie's presenting um so far, that does not include any, I, any plan to repay that. This is just to get done projects. Um so there, there is gonna have to be a thoughtful discussion about that and the implications of, of choosing not to do that um on, on um the district in the future.
Does Jamie have a, a number for the thirty six million?
It's not on this presentation, but yeah, we ran some numbers to just have some estimates.
Do you have an estimate of what?
It was too scary to show.
No, I, I didn't have enough time to get it printed out before I got here. I was, long dead. Um the total would be approximately six point seven million dollars as a budgetary amount. So it'd be another hundred thousand dollars. It would, it would ex, you know, every time we borrow a little bit more, it extends maybe a little bit farther out in maturity. But the incremental amount, that's the one we get to six point seven. So we go from, what, six point four to six point six to six point seven. And I would also add, although we put it into the twenty four budget, the impacts don't technically hit you until the twenty five budget just from a timing standpoint, this point, that's the good news. So we will potentially build a little bit of uh reserves from the budget amount versus when it actually hits your budget in real life. Just from a timing standpoint.
And what was our number at before, Brian, before we refinance?
Eight point four.
Yeah, it was neat.
Twelve percent or general fund budget.
Um looking ahead, um it seems if we do what Allison is suggesting, go with the fifteen now, does that not, and this is for the administration as well as Jamie and the board too, does that sort of give us some breathing room? In other words, how quickly would we then have to talk about uh borrowing for that second phase or second step or whatever you wanna call it?
I think it, it's more important to talk about the second step projects and commit to it so we can lock the, the prices in by end of the year. Because it seems like January or the construction industry resets itself.
Yeah, so we don't get much breathing room.
No.
Okay.
The, the, the borrowing is not the problem because we're, if we get that second set, we're not gonna be spending it to next summer anyway. You know, so that, that money will sit in the bank for the first set we probably won't close to, you know. Jamie will watch the markets and call me up and say, hey, we can go today.
But in the meantime, we're earning interest on that.
Oh yeah.
Because we have to spend it.
Correct. And that's why we wanna do the small issues because then we're not subject to having to give anything over the, the three point five or whatever the, the bond rate is back to the IRS. We can keep that and use it for, to
Go toward the projects.
Or replenish our capital reserves.
Uh one, one other question I have here, so let's say we, we do approve the fifteen million, we, and we, we get that figured out. And then next year, we try to tackle the uh, the next set of capital projects. However, you know, this is an election year, I will just say, and you know, um there are five seats up for election. What, what would have to be voted on, I guess, next year to continue on with that, that other set of projects? And what are the ramifications of, um and maybe this is more of a question for administration, uh you know, what are the issues if we can't move forward with those capital projects next year?
Well, what's gonna happen is the, the same thing has been happening all along. You're gonna be kicking the projects down the road. I'm sorry if I'm blunt, but you're gonna be kicking the projects down the road. It's gonna cost more to fix them later on, you know. I, I know Christie and, and our, our team's gonna say that high school has to be done because, you know, we have to have heating and air conditioning there.
Sure. What uh i- i- and any uh implications from a, a financing standpoint? If we only uh did the fifty million financing, but then for whatever reason did continue on with the second set, is there anything that would uh be an issue from, from your perspective, Jamie?
I, I mean, obviously we're funding projects that are approved by the board ultimately.
Right.
So um one of the things I would probably kick off to your solicitor is if you did execute contracts to the various projects and the board does not move forward with them, there could be a cost to you.
I don't think you're talking about actual construction projects at this early phase. So it's, it's more just contracts to lock in prices.
Correct.
Those would just dissolve and you wouldn't be locked in, but you'd be starting from scratch again for whatever remaining projects you had. And obviously, as everybody keeps saying, as time goes by
Right.
the numbers go up.
So yeah, so the, imagine next year for the second set of projects, we would have to put out another reimbursement resolution or something there to, to, to get those approved.
I would not be doing a reimbursement
You don't have any money.
I'm sorry, not a reimbursement.
Yeah, cuz you wouldn't have the money to do it.
Yeah, sorry, I, I meant a parameters resolution.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, if you went above the amount that we originally uh approved, so as an example here, we did the first one. I keep using fifteen million dollars. Let's just assume fifteen million. So now we've used half of what we technically approved. So there's still another fifteen million dollars to play with to borrow for the next set of transactions. So that's still okay. If we go above that amount, we would have to do some sort of modification or a new resolution.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, Brian, when we started this with the idea that we were gonna be reimbursing the capital, what was that pot of money?
We had four point two million dollars left in the capital reserve account, which we basically took out to, to do these projects, so.
Is that zero?
So that is depleted. So if we, worst case scenario, which is, you know, how I feel about snow. Um, you know, if we don't do some, if we don't follow through with these projects and then we also don't have any money to do, we, we could really be putting ourselves in, in a really bad situation.
Yeah, i- if there's an emergency, I mean, we, we all know that there's, there's been, you know, environmental emergencies in the, in the area recently. So not having reserves to cover things that are un, you're not aware of is an important aspect. And again, not that we have to follow everything that the Standard and Poor's tells you what to do, but you know, that, the concepts of having those reserves are very important to the, how they look at things.
Thank you. Yeah, I, and you know, from my perspective, I, I definitely um realize the importance of maintenance here. I think from, from my end, I'm really just looking at all the risks that we face potentially here uh going in with this, uh with this project. The, the other question I had, Jamie, was um is there any limitations on uh if we could refinance or when we could refinance these bonds if we needed to?
There's a, there is some, uh, there is some, there's always, always is. When you do uh bond financings that are over ten million dollars, uh you, your call provision will be either between seven and ten years. So you have the ability to refinance a debt at an option, at your option in the future. Uh if we borrow less than ten million dollars, it's a different call provision, it's five years. But they will be, have the option to be called in the future should we have the economic uh value.
All right, I think we have to, um at our next count meeting, look at the projects and make our decisions.
So I, I would actually like to recommend, you know, why, I know that we all love spending time with each other. Um that, you know, at these meetings, I think we should actually add another meeting to really sit down and, and go through these projects and, and make some decisions about where we are at so we have some good numbers. I don't, I don't think that we obviously, we obviously don't need Jamie here. I don't think we need John here. Um I think it's just having a conversation of looking at those projects. And we've already done some of that legwork with John and Sherry, um taking the feedback that you gave us at the last meeting, um breaking down those projects and, and looking through what are things that could be removed. Um but they've expressed to us that the longer that we, and this is, you know, not like a scare tactic, it's just honest to God truth, that the longer we delay in making decisions about this, that it will cha- it could potentially change pricing. And like Dawn mentioned, it would wind up being a wash. So the sooner that we can do that, I think the better, the better that we are.
So we should probably do this next week?
I would say that within the next two weeks, yes.
I agree that we should get together and we should have this thing wrapped up by next month because you're gonna have completely newborn in December and you're gonna have to convince them of the wisdom of what we've spent or what y'all have spent two months or three months working on. And you're gonna start from square one, so I would recommend that we commit. And uh I agree with Allison that if we said we were gonna reimburse the uh district for that uh four million, then we're gonna reimburse the district, so I like thirty six mil and uh we'll go from there.
Is that what I said?
Oh, you didn't say it, I'm saying it. This is a nonprofit organization. Inflation goes up between five, four to five percent a year. The idea that you can run this school district without owing money is a fool's measure. It doesn't work. And if we don't keep these buildings up to par, then we're just wasting taxpayers' money and we're gonna have to come back to them for more later. So the idea that, oh, we're gonna save the taxpayer money, you're not gonna do it. You're gonna spend a third more by waiting two years. So I recommend we get it done.
All right, so could we uh ask the administration to set something up?
We were already looking at dates and thought possibly um the twenty sixth as a, as a possible date Thursday, the, I believe Thursday, the twenty sixth. And then a date that, that following week. I would offer up to do Halloween because I'm trying to get out trick or treating, but I don't know. I don't know that everybody feels that same way, but you know, definitely maybe the twenty sixth, so. And then I'll send you some other dates that we can, okay?
All right, good. Thank you, thank you, Brian. Dr. Heller and Jamie. Yeah, before I go, I, I know there, we asked a lot of good questions. Do you, if you have any other questions about, you know, impacts to, you know, financials, rating, things like that? You know, we're happy to even prepare, provide the information to the administration for those meetings as well, but we're, you know, we're here to help you, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
And it, with the administration, will this be posted out onto the website as well?
So uh Jen Breton created a webpage dedicated to capital projects and uh the, the presentation that we just gave in the options um will be posted as well as Jamie's presentation. Um so that way our community can follow along with uh everything that we're doing and all the information that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Jamie.
Um next on the agenda, we will, as far as I know, there's no need to amend the agenda tonight, correct? And we move now to number five, the superintendent report, Dr. Heller. And we move now to number five, the superintendent report, Doctor Heller. Well, the superintendent report is next. Okay, yep, thank you.
So, thank you, Mister Fiddler. Uh, tonight I wanted to share with the board and our families the district's game plan for inclement weather. And I'm sure that you're thinking that it is October seventeenth and why is this a priority and and honestly, that is a great question. And I think obviously everybody knows it's because I think about snow constantly because I do not want to have to make that call. Um, but you may remember from last year that as a board, there was numerous conversations about the use of flexible instruction days. And how do we plan for instruction if and when one of those days are are called? Um, so thinking about what those days would look like, uh, we started to outline a plan. Um, for us to of how this would work, um, if and when we would have to use a fit day. Um, so we needed to start thinking about that now. Um, so our district is is very fortunate to have devices available. For all K through twelve students. Currently, our three, uh, third graders through twelfth graders take those devices home. And our fourth through twelfth graders use a pla- an online platform called Schoology as part of their instruction. Our third graders very shortly will start to learn how to use Schoology and that will actually take place within the month. In the next couple of weeks, our parents at the K two level will be receiving information about Schoology. Um, and this platform for our little ones will be, um, have pictures for them, so they'll be able to navigate it. It won't be like the Schoology that our older students use. Um, so it'll definitely be more child friendly. We'll also be starting to send devices home with our K through two, K through two students. Um, so parents can begin working with their children to to start to access. Not only Schoology, but Dreambox, which is the online platform that the board approved, um, during the budget process. Which is how we, uh, it's a a program that we use to enrich and remediate our students in ELA and math. Um, the reason why we're doing this now is because that is gonna be the basis of our fit day instruction for. Our our primary students, um, instead of sending home uh, packets. Um, so we want it to be more interactive for our students and in order for that to be successful. We have to start to work with the students and our families to get an understanding or develop an understanding of how to do that. And we want that to be a an easy process for them. So we understand that it is definitely going to take some time. Um, but we believe that if we start now in October, if and when we need to call a fit day. Um, our families will have a very clear understanding of what their children need to do. That day, um, as part of instruction and that our whole community is is on the same page and we're not. Trying to scramble and put together plans. Um, so that is our plan. Um, it was rolled out to our teachers, uh, the other week. Um, we're gonna be using professional development time that we have coming up to give teachers time to work through and put Schoology together. And then we're also going to, as I said, be communicating with our families. Um, so that they have an understanding and awareness that these devices are gonna be coming home. Um, we do, we do believe as as an administration that, um, our our students are able to to handle this. Um, you know, after going through the pandemic and having instruction being online here part of the year in Exeter. Um, myself, my my own child was a kindergartner that year to see her navigate that iPad. Um, and being able to log on and off, um, you know, I I have complete confidence that. Our teachers will do a a great job teaching the the kids how to get on these platforms. Um, at school, they're already doing it. And then we just need to to work with families at home so they're able to navigate it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Heller. Questions from the board? Alright. Uh, normally we would move into public comment, but we have no one signed up to. Comment on anything. Board meeting minutes, if there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings. Two meetings on the fifth. Special voting meeting and the committee of the whole and September nineteenth, the board voting meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the September twenty twenty-three treasures report. Payment request dated September twentieth, twenty twenty-three to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Hearing no objection, the treasures report and the payment requests are approved. Education committee, Doctor Battler.
Thank you, Mister Fiddler. Um, the first up is the enrollment report. If there's any discussion on the enrollment report. Hearing no discussion, I'll move on. It is reported that the field trips below within the sixty mile radius have been approved. One through nine, two through nine being added since the cow. See if they have any questions. No, moving on to C. It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following education committee items. Number one, the following list of staff conferences.
Second.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following education committee items. Um, there's no two, so I assume it's a tuition agreement between Kids Peace National Centers Inc. and the Exeter Township School District. For special education services for student eight, six, eight, two, three, two, four for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. At a cost of one hundred and seventy dollars per day or a total of thirty thousand, six hundred dollars per year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Finally, it is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following education committee item. A contract between ABA Support Services LLC and the Exeter Township School District to provide additional behavioral support. For student eight, six, nine, two, three, two, four for up to twenty-five hours at a rate of a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy. Five cents per hour for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
And that's everything for the education committee.
Thank you, Doctor Battler. Personnel committee, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mister Fiddler. It is recommended the board of school directors approves and ratifies the following personnel items and of note. Any item in bold has been added since the committee of the whole meeting. Under items, one resignation, certificated staff, support staff, certificated substitutes and mentor.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves and ratifies the following personnel items under two appointments, certificated staff, mentors, support staff. Revised department chairs payments, certificated substitutes, support staff substitutes, guest teachers and extended daily substitutes as well as the winter coaches.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves and ratifies the following personnel items under transfers of support staff.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the board of school directors approves and ratifies the following personnel items under leave of absence, item number four and. The attached list of course, correct, course requests under item five.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
That is it for Mister, uh, personnel, Mister Fiddler.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Finance, facilities and audit, Mister Mel.
Thank you, Mister Fiddler. Uh, first item is item A. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the participation. In the CAFCO collaborative, uh, collaborative procurement effort through the Lancaster Lebanon Intermediate Unit thirteen. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
And item B, uh, consent agenda, there is one item. It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the following finance facilities and audit items. Item one. A twenty twenty-three proposal from Conrad Segal for health and welfare consulting services.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Mister Fiddler, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mister Mel.
Sorry. Should have given you it so much sooner.
People keep reminding me about the games, so I'm trying to try to keep this thing, yeah. Uh, policy committee, uh, Doctor Hamburger isn't here. Um, so I will uh, read the motion. Uh, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following policies. Uh, one under first reading and four under second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, athletics and extracurricular activities, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the cooperative sponsorship for junior high school cheerleading in the Exeter Township School District. With Antietam Middle Senior High School beginning with the winter twenty-three, twenty-four season.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. Is this gonna push out any cheerleaders that want to compete for Exeter?
Um, my understanding is this of the situation, so if there's more questions, um, we can check, but. Um, right now, the junior high cheerleaders only cheer at home. That's at Exeter and Antietam. And since Antietam does not have a home, um, that means they wouldn't get to cheer at all. So that's why there, we're having this cooperative. Um, in regards to your question, my understanding is that. There will be tryouts for the junior high team. Um, I'm not sure, did we already try out our junior high girls or how that works?
I'm not sure. I actually was just texting Mister Legath about it, uh, so that is something that I think the community is. Going to be interested in, um, in knowing. And I did, I I honestly knew that. We had a cooperation with, uh, several of our sports, water polo being one of them, and it's not just Antietam that we have that with. It's also Ole and and Wyom that were engaged in a co-op with them as well. Um, but he said it's actually about eighty-five percent of our sports. So I I haven't heard anyone being upset that an Exeter child lost a place on a team. Um, because of any Antietam student, um, but I do think that we should, I'll check on that. Get back to you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, Exeter Community Education Foundation, Doctor Battler.
Oh, Mister Fiddler, I have a couple more announcements for Mister Legath. Could I share? Is it okay? That's okay. Um, he wanted me to share that girls tennis won the BCI double A championship, beating Conrad Weiser three to two. Boys cross country team won the BCI A A championship today for the third straight year in a row. Um, girls cross country finished second today in the county championships. Uh, football is eight and O, number four in district three. The girls volleyball team qualified for the BCI double A and district three tournaments. Uh, girls soccer qualified for the BCI double A and district three tournaments. And freshman Julia Weiser qualified for the PI double A golf tournament. Um, she shot yesterday, eighty-five yesterday and seventy today, and she tied for twenty-second, I guess, in the state.
Wow, wow. Fantastic. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
If I could just jump back in, uh, Mister Legath just texted me and he said, um, no, that we would not cut Exeter students. Um, for Antietam students, we haven't had to do that. And, um, we have Antietam students participating in football, field hockey. Boys and girls cross country, girls soccer, wrestling, boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls track and field, boys and girls swimming. And boys and girls water polo. So, um, we have a lot of Antietam students participating in in many of our sports and we're. Very excited to have them and and welcome them to be a part of our, um, sports community.
Thank you, Doctor Heller. Anything else, Mrs. Wilson?
That's everything. Thank you.
Um. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Doctor Battler.
Thank you, Mister Fiddler. ECEF is happy to welcome Detective Sergeant Rocco DiCamillo to our board of directors. Rocco, excuse me, Rocco has been with the Exeter Police Department since nineteen ninety-seven. And we know he will bring valuable input from a community standpoint to our organization and we are very excited to work with him. We are proud to announce that thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars was raised at our twenty twenty-three golf outing in August. Many thanks to our sponsors, golfers and volunteers. And a special thanks to Mailshark and JP Mascara for being our platinum sponsors once again this year, along with an anonymous sponsor. Our next outing will be Friday, August second, twenty twenty-four at the Reading Country Club. All bricks from the Phase Five Joint Brick Project with Exeter Alumni Association have been installed under the Eagle statue at the senior high school. We are happy to continue this project with a Phase Six that will run until thr- six thirty to twenty twenty-four. Special thanks to Mister Laura for helping install the bricks for us. Lastly, tickets are still available for our Casino Night Gala fundraiser on Friday, November tenth, twenty twenty-three at the Reading Country Club. This event will commemorate fifteen years of supporting Exeter schools. Information about the gala can be found on our website at exetereducationfoundation.org.
Thank you, Doctor Heller. Uh, I have a one announcement on behalf of the, uh, Burke's Career and Technology Center. There'll be two open houses for families, uh, anyone on the public really. Uh, at the East Campus on November first, from five to eight P M. The address there is thirty-three oh seven Freedensburg Road. In Ole. And at the West Campus on November eighth, from five to eight P M, and that's at ten fifty-seven County Welfare Road. In Leesport. Um, uh, Exeter has quite a contingent at the BCTC, uh, as you know. And it's just a fantastic opportunity. So for families who are thinking about having their kids go there, there's two opportunities to. Get a firsthand look and talk to some of the teachers. Alright, um, unless the administration has something regarding BCIU Board of Directors or Legislative Liaison, uh, we will hear a report next month. Uh, Township Borough Liaison, Mister Mel.
I have nothing to report, Mister Fiddler.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are now up to our second public comment section, no names, but would anyone from the public wish to address? The board? Alright, would anyone on the board like to be heard?
Uh, Mister Fiddler, I just wanna remind the public that, uh, our next committee of the whole meeting is actually gonna be on Monday. Instead of Tuesday, due to election day, so it'll be Monday, November sixth. And obviously, um, we'll, uh, the public will hear, uh, will see a a calendar appointment probably on the website. For the special meeting to discuss the year capital projects, which is tentatively October twenty-sixth.
You read my mind. I was going to say that about.
Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder. You can still announce it if you want to.
No, no. Too many people wanna watch the game. I don't wanna get shot, so, uh. Hearing no objections, uh, we will adjourn the meeting. Have a good.